Today is Wednesday, February twenty-sixth. Please rise with pleasure.
I declare the unions to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States.
Two recognitions please. The first is indoor track, state champions.
Yes, the Bangor School Department.
The Bangor School Department and the school committee would like to recognize the Class A Girls Indoor Track Team for the 2025 State Champions.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I've already peeked ahead at tonight's agenda and it looks very busy, so I'll keep my comments short and sweet. I would like to start out with some thank yous. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Robinson and our school committee for having us here tonight as we celebrate the 2025 Girls Class A Indoor Track State Championship. Additionally, I'd like to thank Dr. Robinson again, Dr. Harris Medberg, for your kind words and extremely well-written notes that I've received in interdepartmental mail. It means a lot to us. The extra time and reaching out to us all means so much. I'd like to thank Dr. Butler for his positive support all season long by either asking me how the team is doing or checking in with me, in with the athletes during the school day. I'd like to thank our coaches. I say this every time that I'm up here, and I'm extremely biased, but I'm going to say this again and again and again. This is the best coaching staff in the state. We are so fortunate to have such highly qualified and dedicated staff. A big thank you goes to our athletic administrator, Mr. Venetta Stein, and his administrative assistant, Mrs. Margot Miller. They are the dynamic duo, and they are the glue that holds our athletic department together. Additionally, this is our school's one hundred and sixteenth state championship. In eighty-one, they've come under Mr. Venetta Stein's watch. His incredible guidance and insight is something that I'm very, very grateful for. And finally, to our amazing group of athletes. They demonstrated so much of what is great about high school athletics. And on a daily basis, they displayed such values as hard work, dedication, skill, cooperation, and most importantly, they carried themselves with a high, high amount of class. I'm a sucker for a good quote. Kids tease me on that a lot. And the quote that I found the day of our state championship was from Olympic gymnast Mary Lou Retton. Each of us has a fire in our hearts for something. It is our goal in life to find it and keep it, keep it lit. Our something was each other at the state meet. We found ourselves midway through the meet trailing a very talented SCARB routine by twenty-plus points, but that fire and our something kicked in. We fought back. We upseeded in three consecutive events and then finished the meet with a state-winning four-by-two relay to capture our third state championship in four years and our fifth overall. Congratulations to all of them, all of you, as our something was truly special to watch, and it represents the efforts everyone made this season. But what is truly special about this team is what, is you've made the effort not only for yourself, but for the program and each other. And that, in my opinion, is a big reason why we stand here tonight as state champions. Ladies, congrats again. We are so proud of each and every one of you. Congrats. What I'll do now is I'll call us up. You'll come up, get a certificate from me, and then you're going to go right over there to Mr. Finney. And what we'll do is we'll just hold off and announce, um, an applause until everybody gets up there. I'm going to call up the team. They'll come to me, and then also I'll call up our coaches as well. And again, we'll just hold off on the applause if we can. Number one is our talented freshman group, Twenty Anteals. Emory Higgins. Emily Murray. Anna St. Peter. Not here tonight, but Rachel Westbarger. Now to our sophomores, Ella Molinaro. Gwen Bushnell. Emma Dryer Neiman. Serena Weston. Not here tonight, Liliana Wilcox. Now to our junior class, Alexis Blue. Sophia Chase. Not here tonight, Grace Dufour. Bailey Frye. Not here tonight, Brooke Harris. Not here tonight with us, Maddie Rice. Kalia Saunders. Not here tonight with us, Brooklyn Schmerzl. Alice Thibodeau. Now to our seniors, Alexander Collins. Jenna Elkhart. Gabrielle Goading. Olivia Mitchell. Madeline Ty. Jalen Williams. And now to our amazing coaches over there on the corner. They can come down. One, Peter Sun. Garrett Johnson. Not here tonight, Maddie Tritt. We're here tonight, Lainie Ty. Steve Early. Roger Huber. Ladies and gentlemen, your two thousand twenty-five state champions.
And then school committee members, if I could have you stand on the right-hand side as well. I have a wide lens. I can't. I can see all the students' faces, so. Everyone say, "Go Rams." Thank you, everyone.
Actually, we have another group. We're sitting in a room tonight. We have the first LEGO League State Champions.
So the Bangor and school committee would like to recognize the LEGO Legends Robotics Team as the first LEGO League Champion, uh, Challenge 2025 Main State Champions. Uh, the team consists from Bangor and Brewer. And Director Finney will share a little bit.
Thank you very much. We're proud to recognize the exceptional achievements of three students in the Bangor School Department who recently triumphed in the statewide LEGO Robotics Competition. Their hard work, creativity, and teamwork have not only brought them success, but they have also showcased the incredible talent within our community. This remarkable accomplishment was highlighted in the Bangor Daily News, bringing well-deserved attention to our students' dedication and passion for their sport. We applaud their efforts and encourage them to continue striving for excellence in all their future endeavors. I'll call everyone up to receive their certificate, and we will take a picture, um, with the school committee in the same location that the, uh, sports teams do as well. The first certificate goes to Megastrey Ramozu. Next, Misha Sathyanavani. And last but not least, Danby Ramozu. Now ask the school committee to join us for a picture.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Up next, we have adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda, Mr. President?
No adjustments this evening.
Then up next, we have public comment. As a reminder, members of the public may address the school committee for anti-frasing that's on school and education matters. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be quiet and not repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. We are here for listening. The superintendent or her staff follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. The committee will not permit profanity or shouting and request that speakers, first, be civil. Discussion of specific personnel or student matters and complaints concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through the established policies and procedures. Before speaking, we encourage speakers to review school policy to, or school policy, school community policy AC, which provides that the committee does not, will not discriminate or tolerate discrimination against students or employees on the basis of membership in protected class. Speakers who share comments contrary to this policy will not be allowed. Continue. Before stating, please state your name and place of residence. Any public comment tonight? We have superintendent, superintendents proposals and updates. Uh, first, do we have any action items?
Uh, we do not.
And next up, we have informational items.
At, at this point, Assistant Superintendent Doctor Kathy Harris Fedberg will do a presentation to update everyone on our curriculum.
Just going to give you an overview of some of the vertical curriculum work that we're doing. Um, I'm going to give you some background information first. Um, if we're going to look at our curriculum overall at a really ten-thousand-foot level, we understand that our elementary, uh, covers foundational skills. Middle school is more content-level-based, high school content-rich. And that way, when we have a BHS graduate, we have a very successful learner. Might look better. I'm going to go over some of the reasons why we're doing this work and the purpose behind that. So, um, a vertical curriculum map ensures that the content and the skills taught at each grade level will build upon each other. The progression helps avoid gaps or unnecessary repetition in the curriculum, leading to a smoother transition for learners as they advance through each grade. A comparison across grade levels provides a clear understanding of what students are expected to learn at each grade level, creating a more cohesive learning experience. Teachers can align their teaching strategies to ensure that learners are ready for the challenges of the next grade. It also provides a level of transparency for families and students. Teachers across different grade levels can collaborate more effectively when they have a shared understanding of the skills and content students are expected to master. It encourages communication and consistency between the elementary, middle, and high school educators. A vertical map also tracks the progress of students across the years, allowing educators to assess whether students are meeting their milestones at each level. It makes identifying areas where students may need additional support or enrichment easier. With a clear map, educators can make data-driven decisions about curriculum adjustments, teaching methods, resource allocation, options, ensuring that learners are prepared for the next stage of learning. Teachers can use the vertical map to better differentiate instruction, tailor lessons to meet varying needs of the learners at different levels. It provides insight into what has been taught previously, helping teachers identify appropriate starting points for new material. Differentiation also allows learners to have multiple opportunities to ramp up for acceleration. What I mean acceleration is at every level. For a district like Bangor, with multiple schools, a vertical curriculum map ensures that the curriculum is consistent across all schools and grade levels, reducing disparities and providing all learners with equal opportunities for success. We especially see the importance of consistency between our East and our West schools. Effective long-term planning ensures that learning is scaffolded, sorry. Effective long-term planning ensures that learning is scaffolded appropriately. Because that's a big mouthful for me, so. It also assists with resource planning, like knowing what textbooks, materials, or professional development is needed. It's based on the content trajectory as well as larger decisions like what courses should be offered and the academies. When learners know what is expected of them at each grade level, it can boost motivation and performance. A vertical map helps create a clear roadmap for learners' academic growth from pre-K to twelve. A clear curriculum map allows parents and community to better understand the academic journey learners are on and how they can support their child's learning. It promotes transparency and helps stakeholders stay informed. So in essence, K-12 vertical curriculum map provides clarity and transparency, improves continuity, and fosters better collaboration, leading to a more cohesive and effective educational experience for all learners. So what has this process been? Whoops, sorry. So we're starting with backward planning, and the intent was to ensure that every grading content is aligned with what is needed to achieve end goals. We know that we want a Bangor diploma to be meaningful and to prepare all learners for life beyond high school. Having a clear understanding where the finish line is enables us to strategically plan each step of the process. By identifying our ultimate goal, we can break it down into manageable tasks, allocate resources effectively, and establish a timeline. This approach not only helps us to stay focused and aligned, but also allows us to anticipate challenges and adjust our actions as needed, ensuring a smooth and efficient journey towards completion. However, we also need to engage in what we identify as forward planning, and that ensures that foundational skills upon which our entire educational journey is built, such as reading, numeracy, critical thinking, are included. Thus, forward and backward planning is required to best meet the needs of all of our learners. So what's the process been? Well, we have started with K, uh, nine through twelve. The identification of a baseline of learning represents a standard educational experience for a typical learner in the Bangor pre-K to twelve system. This benchmark establishes clear end goals and provides a framework for ongoing skill development. However, it is essential that no student remains complacent in their learning. Therefore, a series of opportunities are integrated to accelerate learning for all students, ensuring that learners are not confined to fixed tracks. Bangor's ten-year strategic plan outlines a goal of forty percent of students having access to accelerated learning, uh, opportunities. As educators, we have an obligation to ensure that all learners are achieving their highest potential. To support this, we will implement a series of ramps to help learners reach their highest levels. This approach will then allow us to provide opportunities for learners to accelerate their learning, no matter where they are in the learning process. In statute, we are required to align our curriculum with the main learning results, which are academic standards and competencies based on the Common Core state standards. Soft skills are also included in this work, things like completing homework, passing it in on time, attending school regularly, executive functioning skills like planning, controlling impulses, being flexible, decision-making. And although not part of the grading process, these skills are needed to be successful in school and in life. So the initial part of this work started, um, with, uh, a focused effort to align K-12 Health and PE, Math, VPA, and six-through-eight Social Studies last year. Because of this work, um, there was a highlighted need for a comprehensive curriculum review, bringing everything in. For this project, I first met with the BHS or the Bangor High School Department chairs to discuss strategies for capturing this information, understanding that it would be a significant undertaking. Based on the number of options that I provided, there were lots of examples. Jane Ventorelli and Eric Hutchinson created a final spreadsheet, which the department chairs then populated, often collaborating with their content faculty for additional input. Once the high school had a solid understanding of the task before them, I brought in interested middle school teachers to work on ELA, Math, Science, and Social Studies. They were also to gather input from their content peers. Grades six through twelve are going to meet at the upcoming March in service to begin important discussions on necessary changes, identifying strengths and weaknesses, developing curriculum maps, and finding ways to better engage learners. Meanwhile, grades pre-K through five, as well as six through eight Health and PE, VPA, and Lower Language will start the process of identifying the typical learning pathways. So what does all this work look like? Good. If you could click on, say, ELA. So we have this massive spreadsheet. If we could reduce it just a little, please, Chris. You'll see on the left, there are the MLR. Those are the main learning results anchor standards. So those anchor standards are placed there, always cycling back so that we, um, ensure that those tenants of learning are covered. Each grade level has an expectation of learning. So if you scroll down to the grade levels, you'll see it starts at twelve, it works backwards till eleven, ten. So everything's aligned with a grade level. And then if you look at column C, you'll see the beginning of the year essential skills. In order to go move into that course or, um, pathway of learning, uh, beginning skills are identified to aid learners, families, and teachers. It just ensures that the sort of knowledge that is, that students are appropriately placed. We've included common assessments, and these will be further reviewed to determine appropriate placement, assessing what is covered, and addressing redundancy, and just to ensure that the assessments reflect purpose. Um, the column E, if you could just, there we go, frequent books and materials so that we would have an idea of what's being used. And again, it's to look for redundancy, ensure consistency, and make sure that things are developmentally appropriate. And then in column F, you'll see an end of your basic essential skills. And these are the skills that if they achieve twelfth-grade English in this case, these are all the skills that they should leave with at the end of twelfth grade. Along the bottom, you'll see there are also tabs. And this is because English isn't just English anymore. So we have English and writing and language and writing and speaking. So each one of those, um, subcategories will be delineated out just like this. So all of those subcategories will be delineated out just like this. So all of those skills, materials, assessments will all be broken out. And we've done this for every content area at the high school. It's still a work in progress. It's not finished yet. And we have a good start with the middle school, but we'd like to have that conversation up in March for six through 12. Because there's already discussions and some of them, if you go one over, please, Chris, to E, I think it is. Okay, we didn't have it there. On some of them, we have put things to consider for the future. So as people are working on, and things have bubbled up, and people are saying, oh, I want to discuss this. Oh, this should look in it. Maybe this would be better in ninth grade rather than eighth grade, or we're doing this at one school, but not the other school. We should have this conversation and bring it to both. So those conversations, running conversations are also being tracked. I can show you a different subject here if you'd like. It's a pretty big document spreadsheet, but we have a lot of information, and I think it's going to mean a lot of information for us. Would you like to see any other subject areas? Get the idea?
I would love to see them, but nobody else.
What would you watch? What subject area would you like to see?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can we have it? It's in the presentation. I'll look at it tonight.
Okay. All right. So can I go back to my? See, we did all those opening. We opened every single one to make sure it was open in case you wanted to look at that.
Yeah, thank you for vetting that.
So what were we finding? Whoops, I think I skipped one. There we go. So grades pre-K through five will be included in the effort. We want to have that comprehensive learning. Accelerated pathways are also going to be part of this. So you saw the just standardized pathway. We're also having one for an accelerated, and we're also having those that are developing skills. Developing is going to be more individualized because students that have developing skills typically have specific needs. Acceleration is a little bit broader, and so we are providing those pathways. But the thing is, we always want to ramp up. We want to provide the opportunity for students to always accelerate. Accelerated pathways, we want to make sure that there's an academic rigor while individualized interventions will be implemented. Our learning maps will be developed at the middle and high school levels. And Chris, if you could do in that math example, this is an old example, and each content area is going to develop these things. So it's like, okay, if I took pre-algebra, but I want to be able to get to calculus, what are the pathways that I could do? This is an old one, it's one that I could buy quickly. But I thought it gave a very good example of how we can ramp into other things. So people will always know what their course pathways are. It might be really hard to start Algebra I in junior and think you're going to get up to calculus, but as a freshman, that's a possibility. And so having these visual pathways, we're hoping will aid people in understanding those. And data will also be used to assess our strengths and identify gaps in our current approach. Go back to the small. You're doing a great job. So we have a strong progression of learning, or we're finding that we have a very strong progression of learning. If a learner stays in the district for their entire school career, they're going to graduate with a really solid education. Soft skills such as communication, teamwork, problem solving are crucial to education as they help learners navigate real-world challenges and build strong relationships. It is important that we embed these skills alongside of our academic learning. Our school offers a diverse array of courses designed to cater to very interests. That's one of the things about being a larger school, that we're able to offer choice. And then we have options to cross multi-disciplines. In other words, you provide opportunities for learners to explore and excel in subjects that may align with their passions and future aspirations, but also to allow for exploration. We need to constantly look at materials we use to ensure that they are provided in high-quality level and that they support our curriculum so learners can see themselves and others in every aspect of their learning. We understand that learning is constantly evolving, as are the needs of our learners. To enhance learning, it is essential to assess learner needs, review relevant research, and adapt our learning pathways appropriately. Achieving this requires careful planning and a systematic approach to ensure that quality is maintained. Rather than implementing wholesale changes, we aim to address these evolving needs in a thoughtful and targeted manner. These are my resources. I really want to give credit to the people that have worked really hard on these. The high school and middle school participants here, they have really knocked it out of the park, I believe. And then I'll open it up for questions for you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Eric Sutberg, for the presentation. It was obviously very well put together, and I really appreciate the simplicity of all of this work in one beautiful deck. So thank you for that. I have a couple of questions. I was hoping that you could share a little bit about, I know you said during the March in Service, teachers in grades six through 12 would look at the curriculum. But if you could just share a little bit more about what the teacher conversation looks like in this vertical mapping, how they, how often they're able to talk about it, what that process looks like, if we're still the beginning of the process or?
Well, unfortunately, it doesn't happen as often as we would like because we only have professional development days. Just a little plug there, you know? And
Wasn't planned.
And we didn't talk about that part. I think what has happened is, so the department heads, because they have an additional stipend, that they have jumped in and they have taken it on. And they've done it, I think, very willingly. If you look at the quality of work in that document, you will see that they have worked really hard. I had a lot of questions for them. I had a lot of things that I wanted to make sure that they were in. We talked about what should be in the columns. We talked about what a, you know, what a traditional, just everyday pathway, like a regular 12th grade student, what would they get? You know, it took a little getting our heads around that because it's like, what is an average? But it's kind of like the median. It's kind of like that, you know, that middle pathway that, you know, it's going to be a solid education for anybody, no matter what. And that is our intent, that that would be what all of our students would get. With the understanding is that we really want to make sure that we're providing pathways for every child to accelerate. And that can be the child with the most, that has the most developmental needs. It's just that where are they in their learning pathway, and then how can we make sure that we extend that learning pathway to the highest level that they can achieve? I think what's happening is that we haven't done this for a few years. So there are things that people have brought in, maybe books or something that they have enjoyed. You know, we've gotten a little off course, just a little bit, not a lot. Or that we might not have covered everything that we thought that we should be covering. And so it's kind of a reminder, okay, you know, there are a series of skills and content area pieces that we want to make sure that every child gains. And this is kind of just a reminder, it's a reflection. It's like, let's look again at what it is that we're doing, and what is that pathway? We want to make sure the pathway makes sense because we don't want them jumping too fast. We don't want them leaving lagging. And you know, it's like, okay, I'm like spinning my wheels here, and I already heard this three times. And making sure that we're providing a robust, well-rounded educational program for every child.
Yeah, I can. Thank you. I can see that. So is the expectation then, once these, all these columns are filled out, the teachers will be able to look at those columns and say, okay, I need to make sure that my sixth grade students, now I have a very clear view.
Yes.
And then we'll get to that point where we have the time to be able to actively have those conversations and look at that way. That's great. Thank you for clarifying.
Also, it's like when teachers know what is expected of them and what the students know is expected of them. I mean, we were hoping that this will be posted. It will be transparent. Parents can see it. The teachers can see it. That it's just, it's a clear learning pathway.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Thank you. And just, I'm hoping really quickly too, I don't know if this question is too nuanced, but you were talking about accelerated pathways. Is there a specific, I know that obviously there's differentiated learning at every grade level, but do those pathways start at a certain grade in terms of like the accelerated pathways, or were you just talking about the differentiated learning?
So primarily, I'm talking about differentiated learning. So even if a child is two or three grade levels below what we would consider a standard pathway, we want to make sure that they're making more than a year's worth of progress. Because if they're making only a year's worth of progress, then they're never ever going to catch up. So we want to accelerate their learning. But we also want to make sure that if a child is an accelerated learner, that we don't say, well, you know, Katie, she's already so smart. We don't need to push her. You know, we want to make sure that they have an equally rigorous program too, because it's not helping them to to spin and just say, oh, I'll just glide my way through until something gets a little hard.
Um, no, thank you very much for that because I do think that people, you know, see the word accelerated, and it's like, oh, well, this is a special thing that should be offered rather than recognizing that every student is accelerating in their own way and is challenged in their own way by their teachers.
Correct. But we also do have accelerated pathways for like, you know, we have gifted and talented students or students that are in an accelerated program and that we're addressing that within this document also. And lots of times, especially like at the younger levels, it can be that it might be, instead of like skipping a grade or something like that, we go deeper and in more depth with more clarity and more understanding. You know, a higher level of sophistication, where at the high school, you'll see things like AP courses and accelerated or honors courses that will be, you know, it will just be content that will be presented at a much higher level.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Can I ask one more question? Just again, curious, you were saying, you know, people are bringing in books that are interesting to them, and I love that. But yes, I also recognize that that direction and that path. And that leads my question of, you know, if there is, obviously there are state standards, there's so many objectives to read through to understand what new curriculum can be introduced. Is there, right now, what does that process look like in terms of updating?
So anything that should be taught, I mean, it should be vetted through the process, especially through my office. It shouldn't just be bringing in things. It should not. We have things that are that are common. So we have like common reads, common assessments, things like that, that every child will be exposed to. And then teachers do have some autonomy to bring in other things. But again, they should be vetted through a process that, okay, it might come from, I don't know, for a while I was reading a lot of books, and they were very good books, but they might have had some biases or things like that that we don't want to perpetuate. People love these books. They think though they're great, and they do often have very good things about them. But you know, when we know better, we should do better. And so we keep having those conversations.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. I really appreciate your time. Those details, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for this report. I wanted to ask about bullet point number 10 on why why conduct vertical curriculum mapping, which is the better parent and community engagement. And curriculum maps are dense, technical documents with a lot of jargon and acronyms, and they're supposed to be that way. Are there ways, and maybe this is a question also or a consideration for Ray and communications, are there ways we can tailor our communications around this to the general public or to the business community or to other stakeholder groups that's just, it's not so technical, but it's still communicating the gist of what what our kids are learning, the different, what they're learning at the different grade levels and so on.
I think if you look now on the website, that curriculum is available in a very, I think, succinct manner so that if parents wanted to go on and say, what are they covering in sixth grade social setting? Then the document that is out there is going to be such that it's going to be readable, that people can see, all right, well, that we're studying Wabanaki studies, we're studying, you know, personal finance, you know, a variety of things that they're covering, but it wouldn't be at the level of detail that this would be.
Thank you, Juan.
I think really part of it is just making sure that parents understand what it is that they, their children should be learning. It shouldn't be a secret.
Thank you for this. This is very informative. Just to back it up a little bit for the those of us who aren't familiar with vertical learning and just the process that this spewed from, I have several questions. One is, when did this start for the high school? And how does this look different than what was done previously?
It looks very similar to what was done previously. I think what it is, is we're just more clearly articulating it. And then it's in one document area so people can easily access it and see it. And then you had something before.
When did this process start?
So we've been doing this for many, many years, but we haven't always done it in such a way that we are having that K through 12 discussion. And the purpose of that is all the reasons that I gave you, but it's just a really a clear way of understanding of the growth that you have each year.
And what brought about the changes to extend it beyond the high school level?
Because it's all foundational, all builds upon each other. So for example, our eighth grade has a GeoCivics. It starts the first part of GeoCivics that actually you have to continue on into ninth grade into the high school. So it's very important that we have those conversations to make sure that the skills that they're building at the elementary and middle school are building upon so that they'll be able to do these courses or skills when they get to the high school.
And are you aware of other school districts that extended beyond the high school or innovative in that sense?
Beyond 12th grade.
No, I mean, okay, through, right.
It's very common. I think you'll find that many districts do this. It just might not be clearly articulated, or it may not be as transparent as what we're making it. Although I will say, there are still districts that really don't have formalized curriculum, which is kind of a little scary to me.
Yes, I appreciate all the work you've done in that. Bangor's a leader in that. When do you expect you'd mention that the younger grades, it's not, you know, complete, it's not totally filled in. When do you expect that to be semi-complete, knowing that it's always evolving?
We have a lot of that already done. It's just putting it into the document so that it is clearly articulated. There, the actual, the elementary is the easy part because it's just a lot of foundational pieces. There aren't so many branches. Like, once you get to the high school, there are many, many branches of choices that you could have. Now, the elementary, like in math, we have to make sure that they can add, subtract, multiply, and divide because we can't get into higher order things. They have those foundational skills. So that's why I'm saying the elementary, you'll find that has a lot more basic, and it'll feel maybe not quite as detailed, but it's every bit as important.
Amber Housman? Thank you. I also love the presentation. Thank you for it. Two questions, or I think more comments, comment like. I love that you emphasize the consistency across schools, and I think sometimes there's a misconception in the community that one side is stronger than the other, or the curriculum is better and so forth. Can you elaborate a little bit on that, touch on that, that east side versus left side?
Certainly can. Thank you for asking that. The curriculum is exactly the same on the east side as it is the west side, and it doesn't matter which school you go in. One of the things that's really kind of unique about Bangor is that we really hold firm that the schools have to have an equity as far as the things that they are covering. And so you can go to a third grade classroom at Fine and a third grade classroom at Abe, and they're going to have the same expectation. Now, there might be different pathways that they'll have to take to get there, and that's okay. Because everybody learns in a different manner, but again, a typical third grader is going to be a typical third grader with their expectations. So the curriculum is the same.
I wanted to clarify that because I hear it often, and I think sometimes it's the maybe the terminology that could be different just a little bit in terms of, you know, I can even think of an example. Thank you. Accelerated, you know, versus drifted and fountained GT, right? So maybe just some changes to families assume that one side is stronger.
Well, and I think unfortunately, those will probably perpetuate in some ways because it's competition. It feels like, you know, you always want to feel like your side is better or something like that. But you know, they're all, every child in this school is important to all of us, and we want every child to achieve their greatest potential. And by having consistency and standards and expectations for every child to meet, then we're ensuring that you're providing that level of equity that will allow for that.
Perfect. Thank you. And one more comment. So I know, I think, I don't know, but the Wabanaki studies, is that, that's fairly new.
Correct. So there was new legislation a few years ago, and it is required through main statute, and we actually have a through line of Wabanaki studies in grades two through eight.
Okay, okay. So and we follow, you know, kind of like you said, legislation and main field.
We follow laws and, yes. I'm the real follower, and I'll say that.
But I think it's also, it's wonderful because we get, as a school community, we get questions about you know, the diversity and what are you teaching our students about history and so forth. So I love, I love seeing that, and I hope to see more of it. you know, the diversity and what are you teaching our students about history and so forth, so I love, I love seeing that and I hope to see more of it.
I think that one thing that I'm really, I feel very passionate about is that we shouldn't silo everything, um, so when we talk about like diversity, equity and that, we find that it is embedded. So students should be seeing themselves, they should be seeing others throughout the entire curriculum, whether it's in ELA or social studies or math or science. And we have to look at it from different perspectives, we have to look at it from different views, uh, but it should be constant, it should be all the time, it shouldn't be like, okay, well, like this is whatever special month it is, I mean, that's not really how we want to operate. Every month is an important month for everybody. Yeah, it's nice to have those highlighted.
I appreciate that.
But it is embedded throughout and I would say that was um just like we talked about the soft skills, those soft skills are going to be threaded throughout the entire curriculum, throughout every single grade because passing your homework is important at every single grade level. Tending school is important at every single grade level.
Thank you.
If you have other questions, then come up and show where I find you. Thank you for your great job.
Thank you. So up next we've got the superintendent's update.
I'd like to provide you with an update uh for tonight. Uh, so we have continued on with our goals of increased communication and consistent communication with our newsletters. Eighth grade visits to sending schools have been completed. Um, and we have our own middle schools eighth grade uh step up days coming up in April. In terms of curriculum, um, I've linked that to the document that was shared so that you can go right to the website and see the curriculum work that is on there right now. Um, and we're looking forward to the continued work and uh thank you to Dr. Harris Medver, it's Medver, it's a lot of work, um, but she's done a great job coordinating the effort and bringing everyone on board to uh work together. At the high school, uh, we have the cell phone policy being formed and further information will follow once that's good, once that gets going and discussions ensued. Um, at the elementary schools, um, of course, there's a lot happening and I always have a hard time just picking like, what am I going to highlight, but the hundredth day of school was a big celebration um across the elementaries, um, and I was able to visit a pre-K classroom, um, and uh they were having a little party, so that was a lot of fun, um, it was a black light and there was highlighters and various items that were glowing, including someone's hair, so it was, um, it was a special event and they were having a load of fun. Uh, the staff survey, it is in process um being analyzed, so that will, those results will be shared once I get those back. Looking at the calendar, which we are going to talk about in a little more detail, um, but you know, it it the the uh proposed early release days, um, as we mentioned, are, you know, very important as, you know, highlighted with this curriculum work. You know, we have a high expectations for students and staff and we really want to make sure that we are creating um a department that supports staff getting what they need to be able to be successful, so uh, we'll dig into that a little more when it comes down onto the agenda. I've been connecting with um community partners, the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club and the Parks and Rec Department, and started those conversations around, you know, adding those early release days. How can we partner, how can we make sure that that communication of the dates and the times is really transparent and clear so that those community partners can also be of service to our families? Our budget update, um, we're fin- I'm finalizing the budget presentation, um, and we'll obviously have our first workshop next next week, March fifth. Uh, the major impacts that are leading to not a tremendously huge increase at this point and, you know, hoping that it will be uh we'll stay that way as we continue to analyze and factor everything in. Uh, but the major impacts include really maintaining our facilities to make sure that things don't uh become a huge issue, we really want to maintain our buildings. Making sure that we have student support in place and then, um, of course, those contractual obligations, which, you know, I'll get way more into this uh next week with a presentation. In terms of uh shifts, we're looking at um discussing uh the focus on enhancing our professional learning and practices to support uh more inclusive classrooms and we are uh having ongoing meetings regarding uh piloting an online pathway for students. Um, and that would include, you know, an application recommendation process, developing criteria. Um, and we are hopeful that that could be uh ready to start this fall, but more information to follow. And of course, uh, we continue to monitor federal changes and uh we'll provide updates as uh necessary. Questions?
Number Sarah?
Thank you for the report and I just wanted to make a couple of suggestions or throw a few thoughts on future updates side in the, at the higher ed level, we're we're talking a lot right now, what we have been talking a lot about artificial intelligence and its impact on uh teaching and learning, particularly these generative chatbots, chat, chat GTP, talking about impact on academic integrity and and all those sort of thorny issues and I I'd be really curious and interested to hear what Bangor School Department, what kind of conversations you're having either at the high school level or district level about artificial intelligence.
Absolutely, we can definitely bring that about, I can gather input from our administrators, um. As we uh move forward with, uh, hopefully, uh, we're very close to hiring our tech director, so um, that's going to be an important conversation, um, bringing that in and uh, you know, bringing that new team member in and gathering some input that way. And uh, speaking of which, I did meet with uh the dean of UMA and that was our topic of conversation, so um he and I are both on the same page with, uh, yeah, we do need to get started and have some more uh transparent conversations around this, uh, we know it's here, we know it's, uh, people are using it. What is our stance, I guess, moving forward? And we've had just some kind of surface level conversations at this point. Uh, so I I welcome, you know, further discussion around that and can certainly bring that about for uh future updates.
Thanks. And then just the other thought I had, a suggestion under the region and state, would it be possible, when appropriate, uh, to get some type of update on uh, the Penobscot River Educational Partnership and what it's doing? What Bangor is doing within that partnership?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you, um, thank you for this report. I um, I was hoping when you um talked about the uh, obviously the enhancing our professional learning and support with uh practices to support inclusive classrooms, can you clarify what you said that?
Sure, uh, we're looking at uh through the uh MTSS process, which is the multi-tiered systems of support, we're really looking at uh kind of doing an overall audit in special services and really looking closely to say, you know, are students, uh, can students be in the regular classroom a little bit more uh with proper supports and doing some restructuring to support that. Uh, we all know that that's um the best case scenario for all students to uh be in that least restrictive environment, so we're doing a kind of a close look at all of that and uh identifying ways to uh shift that.
That's great, thank you for that, um, and Director Baffler, no, uh, probably very involved in that, obviously, um, so thank you very much for for that, uh. And um, just really quickly, I'm very excited to hear about the online pathways for students. As a clarifying point, this would just be right now for students that are enrolled in Bangor schools.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much for that clarification. Any more questions? Thank you very much for that, actually. Moving on to our business action items, first up we have we have school committee meeting scheduled.
Yes, uh, and this is in your packet, we have our dates uh set for next, um, so please let me know if you have any questions about that, I think it, we all had a chance to review that.
Next we've got business action items, and first up is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February twelfth. Can I get a motion to approve minutes?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Wait, I have a question, yeah, so there there's, I think there's a typo here uh for A one and two, because it says Chair Luciana, I think, um, Tim chaired it last time.
Thank you.
Just a little typo.
That was.
Right above it, since Chair Luciana was.
So sending that update. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Six oh?
Yeah. Next up we have uh second reading of revised policies.
I'm recommending approval of the second reading of policies, uh revised policy AC, non-discrimination.
Can we, can we pull one out instead of taking them all together so that we can talk about one, vote on the others? Have one.
I can read them all individually.
Well, I I think, I think what we've done in the past, correct me if I'm wrong, is we'll, we'll take the ones that we don't think we're going to have discussion on as a block. Hey, has that?
That's fine.
Is that okay? So I'd actually, I'd actually pull the ICA Bangor School Department's school calendar.
Oh. So I'm recommending approval of the second reading of the policies, revised policy AC, non-discrimination, equal opportunity and affirmative action. Revised policy BCA, code of ethics, revised policy BVA, organizational meeting. Revised policy BCB, committee member conflict of interest. Revised policy BDD, school committee superintendent relationship.
So moved, second. All in favor?
Six oh?
Uh, now we'll move on to the second reading of policy ICA. And do we want to do, uh, we'll go ahead and get a motion and then we'll help open it up for comments, so can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second, thank you, and now we'll open it up for questions, comments, concerns. For Sarah.
So, um, at our fir- for our first reading, we had uh of the calendar, we had nine early release days. After, you know, further discussion and hearing some feedback, um, and understanding that, well, this is, I do feel very, very strongly about incorporating time for professional learning, I also do want to be mindful of the challenge that that brings for some families. Um, so what we have done is modified the calendar at this point to include six early release days for next year. Those uh months will be September and October. There will be no early release, November, December and January, and then there will be uh pick up again in February, March, April and May, so we are hopeful that uh with this modification, it will help to ease us into this change and uh support families and we know this could be potentially uh, but having a few less days, we feel may be uh helpful, so thank you for everyone for the feedback and for uh families that reached out, community members. It was, it's helpful for me to hear from everyone to know, um, you know, how we can best move forward to make sure that this will be a sustainable initiative that will support everyone involved.
Thank you, thank you for that update, uh, quick question, um, in the off chance folks are not reading the calendar in depth this winter, will there be messaging about and uh, okay, um, sorry, I'm looking at your non-verbal juice. For those uh individuals, yes, not looking at the calendar today, what type of messaging is going to go home anyway?
Well, um, I think it's on my newsletter, my newsletter for this month, and so I'm happy to start promoting that and sharing that now, um, so you know, I wanted to wait until it was voted on and approved, um, but I can definitely start. And once it's approved, um, you know, we can share it out.
That would be fantastic, thank you.
And highlighting that.
I just know a lot of parents, um, I I, you know what, I'm not going to reject, I usually don't look at the calendars with names. So I I think that anything that we can do to continually promote this, um, and and remind folks that there might be some extra days they have to work their schedule and.
Yeah, and and we can also do, um, I can set up uh Blackboard, like the the robo calls or the, you know, actually a voice, a voice message that can go out reminding folks of these early releases.
Oh, that's great.
We can set that up.
That is great, thank you, thank you very much, I uh, I know that a lot of work went into thought and inspiration and there are so many hands on deck and I also know that it's going to surprise folks next year and so anything we can do to mitigate that, I appreciate, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just want to thank Dr. Robinson for her um willingness to listen to a lot of different perspectives. I know I contacted you many times on this and I appreciate your your thoughtfulness uh on this issue and I I do like the moves from nine to six for for the, all the reasons you mentioned. Uh, one thing I do want to ask about is, and and I I'd like it to just continue to be a consideration as we see how things go this this coming school year, the this next school year. The the Wednesdays, and I'm I'm thinking back to my time, it it is, and Wednesdays are different than what most school districts do in terms of early release days, most do Fridays. And I I go back to my time as a classroom teacher and there is a, there's a flow, there's a rhythm to teaching and I, that middle of the week, I I I just, I think about that a little bit, or what what kind of impact that has on the flow, the rhythm of teaching at week versus a Friday afternoon, and I I'd be interested to hear your thoughts, and I know you mentioned this a little bit two weeks ago, why you, why you were looking at the Wednesdays, but I'd be interested to hear again and I hope we look at this that day next year reach out to teachers and and get an idea from them, how are they feeling about it being a Wednesday?
Sure, I think, I think we can definitely um connect with and get feedback from staff, um, as administrators work through, um, you know, working with staff at the early release days, um, definitely gathering feedback to see how it's working. Um, I do know, I I don't have the numbers, but there are a number of schools that do, um, the professional learning on a weekend. Some of the reasoning I've heard, and again, I haven't experienced it on a Friday, but some of the reasoning that I've heard for not using Fridays is that it starts to eat into the weekend and then um, sometimes the professional learning environment is more, uh, is a little bit more challenging because folks are looking forward to the weekend, I mean, there's you can, you could pick any day and have a reason that it's going to work or a reason that it's not, but I hear what you're saying and and we do want to make sure that uh this is going to work for for the staff as well, of course.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, um, I appreciate this um second meeting and the work that's gone into this and the production from the the nine to the six days, I'm just concerned about the validity of families to cover that day, unfortunately, a lot of parents and families rely on the school day as a form of childcare, so I appreciate you speaking to other daycare or after-school care facilities in the area, see whether they're able to cover it. Do we know when they will know whether they can cover it or not, you you mentioned that talks had started, but do we know definitively?
Well, I I think it's just difficult to answer when we we don't really know who's going to need it. I know there's a number of uh people I've spoken to that already said, you know, this isn't going to be an issue for me, I already have a plan, you know, that people who have have been thinking about it, um, so I I mean, first we would have to know who needs the care, I think we we may have to go through it first, then understand more. But we are uh still continuing on with our mentor uh program as well, but uh will also help to support families um and further details uh will come from that, uh, I I'd say throughout the the spring.
Sure, somewhat selfishly, will this uh Parks and Rec, for example, or the YMCA, would they be amenable to the people who already have after-school care program in place and just, because I understand there's a difference between those who don't have, don't have white uh children in white care or Parks and Rec or Boys Go Club, but already have their children there? Would they be amenable to those students who are already there to doing that extra six days of half-day?
Because the the initial conversations I had seemed, they seemed very open to that and they were also very appreciative to have such a long advance notice to be able to know those dates in advance so that they could make sure that the staffing was available. You know, and and people could be locked in for those dates, so it seems promising, um, I didn't go too much further, I wanted to see where we landed, but um I can definitely uh provide ongoing updates.
And I would imagine sincerely, um, more, at least, um, Parks and Rec, they're they're even flexible with snow days, which are, who knows when those happen, um, and they step in, so I would imagine they'd be okay. Or at least they'd be able to step in to those who are already. Um, one last question, um, it's kind of to Katie's point or Member Brian's point, uh, that, um, often parents don't start paying attention until a school has started, was there a often parents don't start paying attention until a school has started. Was there any reason why, for example, the September in-service date was not one of the ones that was maybe January would be in place? Was there some thought process that I can start, so that I? This alive?
Well.
Maybe they started in October, for them.
Right, right. I, I think, you know, there's, again, different schools of thought. Having an opportunity, we have only those two in-service days prior to the students coming. And when teachers come back in August, the workshop days. And oftentimes that is jam packed and, you know, teachers really also need time to work in their classrooms and to make sure that they're prepared. So this provides an opportunity where, you know, they have a, a couple of weeks getting to know their students. And then it gets a really quick time to come together and say, you know, okay, where are the needs? Because, you know, they may know some of the students from the year before, but there's going to be new students. There's going to be a multitude of changes, you know, things shift and change over the summer. So having that opportunity to really kind of regroup once the students have come and, and begun, I think is, is an important opportunity for, for teachers.
No, thank you. That makes sense. And just lastly, I, I'm hopeful that, you know, that we do receive those ongoing updates and possibly move back to nine days, right? Because I think it's, it is considered best practices and I know there is a necessity for this. But just kind of the baby steps, I appreciate that. And I spoke to Dr. Robinson about it as well. You know, maybe this is something new for us as a district and there's a lot of, you know, concern. And so as we ease into it, I'm hopeful that we get back to the nine days if necessary.
I'm just, I have my kids in both Parks and Rec and Y and both, when we sign them up, offer snow coverage, school day, in-service coverage, holiday coverage. And, and they're very flexible prior to those, letting us know again, you can sign up right now for those. So as someone who uses, uses both of those, I, I would hope they can be able to flex on this. I'm sure they can. They're very flexible already. So I, I'm not, I feel terrible being like, I'm not worried, but my, I'm very fortunate to have people that are able to, after my kids for a nominal sum, and I'm happy to continue that exchange. So I, I think that that will be a great resource for the parents who already have, you know, this, this ability to flex their schedule quite so much. So thank you. Thank you, everyone. So are we ready to at least take a vote on this? All in favor?
Six oh?
Thank you. So next up, we have donations and Member Hosman will share common donations.
To Abraham Lincoln School from the Family Dollar Candy and Stuffed Animals for Staff, having a total dollar value of $125. To James F Dowdy School from the DMT Fund in Memory of Danielle Thompson. A cash donation to support students having a total dollar value of $200. To Bangor High School from Aspen Schaub and Family, a cash donation for student support services having a total dollar value of $500 and I move to accept with much gratitude.
Second, all in favor?
Six oh?
Thank you. And next up, we have introduction items and have first reading of new and revised policies.
I'm recommending the first reading of the following new and revised policies. Revised policy BDB, school committee officers. Revised policy BDE, subcommittees. Revised policy BDF, advisory committees to the school committee. Revised policy VE, school committee meeting schedule. New policy BEDL, adjournment of meetings.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Six oh?
Yep. And moving on to community updates. First, do we have any comments or questions? All right, moving on to community events. I don't believe you have any of those this evening. And representative's reports, do we have any? All right, student committee report.
Okay, so I just have three quick little things. Spring sports, informational meetings in these upcoming weeks. So make sure to listen for those. Next week, we have something really exciting happening at the high school. We have the Spirit Week. Our theme is ram into spring. I like the slogan a lot. We have all the themed days and we get to create these big posters that you might get to see up in the halls. We have activities after school every single day. The unified basketball game is a highlight on Tuesday, basketball Lego building, digital drawing games, pickleball, all different types of trivia you could imagine, just dance. We have a math meet and a volleyball tournament, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, put on by the senior class.
Thank you. That's great. All right. Any reports? So, right, and in formation dates? Formation dates, I'm sorry everyone. Next up, the important dates, Wednesday, March 5th, 2025 Budget Workshop Meeting, 7:00 PM Bangor High School Library. Wednesday, March 12th, 2025, regular meeting, 7:00 PM Bangor High School Library. Wednesday, March 26th, regular meeting, 7:00 PM Bangor High School Library. And last chance for any questions or comments?
Just a quick question. So is the March 5th Budget Workshop Meeting, is that with city council or is that just us? And will we be having one with them? I forgot.
There's something in April, I can't remember the date.
Okay, and that's a joint one? Okay. Because usually we like to have that conversation with them.
We have, we have have been having ongoing conversations. I've met with Deb Laurie at least twice with Director Hammond.
I, I know a few, a couple, I should say, have reached out to me, just kind of, where are you at and so forth? Because we have, I've done that with them as a chair last year and so forth. And I was like, I'm not sure yet. So.
We can talk further.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. That would be great. Yes, we will. Thank you. All right. Well, in that case, move to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Six oh?
All right, thank you. Adjourn. Thank you, everyone.